Hector, are you on? On?
Oh, yes, Mayor, I'm present.
Okay, I made a really great recruit for the Planning Commission, hoping, has there an application come in yet? Have you seen one?
I'll go check my emails and I'll see what's available.
Well, I, go ahead.
I do believe one was actually emailed to Kristen today, so I think it made its way in.
Oh, good, good, good. That's a solid, solid applicant.
And Hector, if you don't mind, I will go ahead and take over screen share for our PowerPoint.
Can I ask a technical question before we get started? I've noticed that when PowerPoint is on, I can't always see all of the tiles. And even when I, like, there's an arrow that goes over and I can catch a few more. Sometimes, sometimes I don't see them all. Is there something? I'm on gallery view. Is there anything else I can do that anybody knows of?
I think there's a setting that you can say, don't show me folks who aren't showing their picture.
Oh, I bet you that's.
I can't remember where that is.
Okay, I'll look for it. I won't do it now, but I'll look for it. So is everybody on or is it just this four? Nope, there's another one.
All right, and Mayor, I do believe the, the crew is all here that can be here tonight.
Okay, before the meeting starts, I just want to say something really quick to Kristen. Kristen, I actually had a pretty good conversation on Sunday with the applicant. And I just got a confirmation back from her that she, she did send it in. So that's, that's who you have before. So just, you can go ahead and schedule her straight to Planning Commission. Because I went over all the same stuff that I would normally go over and just consider, consider that done. Okay, um, so. We'll go ahead and call the regular, the Talent City Council regular meeting of February 2nd. To order roll call, please.
Council Clerk?
Here.
Council Prenderon?
Here.
Council Grader?
Here.
Councilor Pestejo is not present. Councilor Byers?
Here.
And Councilor Perry Miller?
Here.
Mayor Eriswood?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. Item number two on the agenda is Meeting Accessibility 2.1 is opportunity to interpret meeting in Spanish. Hector?
This is una pregunta para público. Si alguien necesita estar interpretando en español, por favor, las su mano hoy. And I'll be watching the attendees. And we do have translator Jenny Castillo present today.
Thank you. And that's so, and that covered 2.2, an explanation on how to participate. Is that correct? Hector?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I would just like to remind any attendees, if they would like to participate during an agenda item, to please raise their hand and wait to be called on. In addition, they would also be able to participate in the meeting with Agenda Item Number Five, Speakers to be Heard on Non-Agenda Items, in the same process, to raise their hand during that time and wait to be called on.
Thank you. Item number three is additions and corrections to the agenda. Does, does Council have any additions or corrections on the agenda? Okay. Item number four is community announcements. Are there any? Boy. I'm tied tonight. Are there any community announcements from Council? Raise the hands. It's a good thing I don't drink. This would be a mess. Okay. And any community announcements from staff? Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would love to announce for all present that we are currently recruiting for a finance director to join our team. So encourage anyone out there with some great budgeting and accounting experience to check out the job description on our website.
Anybody else? Last call? Must be my, the night for alcohol references. Okay, the next item is item number five, Speakers Heard on Non-Agenda Items. Hector, were there any speaker request forms?
Madam Mayor, as I'm in the office now and I will, I'm able to check. There are no submissions for speakers to be heard on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Hector. If there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on non-agenda item, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any if you're on, and I don't see any phones, so. Also want to take this moment to acknowledge Commissioner Daughter is with us tonight. Thank you, Commissioner, for your service to talent as our liaison. The next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Report. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. You all have a copy of my manager's report in the agenda packet. Would like to just highlight a couple of topics out loud. Recruitment for the Finance Director, we have already shared with the meeting. Want to also point you guys to some regional initiatives that will come before you soon, particularly the the CB, CDPG application for food access in partnership with Access, who is our food pantry providers. It's something that we are partnering with. And also that some graduate student SOU students are currently helping us conduct some community surveys for feedback on COVID-19 impacts, which will help inform how we can use our ARPA funds to best serve talent as well as businesses throughout Talent Phoenix and unincorporated Jackson County to help us better understand what their barriers are for returning in this post-fire pandemic world. And I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, Jordan, for an easy to read, straightforward report. We sure like having those in our packet. Alrighty. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. Has everybody had a chance to look at the check register and read the minutes? Are there any comments or questions? I just have one quick question about the check register, and it's just kind of a dumb curiosity thing, but I noticed that we paid some emergency large sum of money to, I'll look up the exact. I just was wondering how many times we pay this a year? It's the Emergency Communications of Southern Oregon. I assume that's 911. Do we pay $23,000 a month for that or is that a periodic, like quarterly or something?
My answer is that that's a quarterly payment that we make, though Kurt, you are on the line, so I'd love to refer to you to correct.
That is correct. That's important payment.
Okay, great. All right. Thanks a lot. So if everybody's had a chance to read the consent agenda, and there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion. I saw a hand go up. Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Clerk?
Yes.
Councilor Prenderon?
Yes.
Council Grader?
Yes.
Councilor Pestejo is absent. Councilor Byers?
Yes.
Councilor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is item eight, Unfinished Business. 8.1 is the approval of contract for fire recovery and resiliency director. Staff report?
Yes, so you are well familiar with the fire recovery and resiliency director process. Very excited to share that we are ready to get signatures on the page so that John and his team, Healthy Sustainable Communities, can really hit the ground running and doing some great work for talent. And I'll open up to any questions, but want to go ahead and just say thank you to John, who's currently in the audience, and his team over there for working with the city to get to this point.
Are there any questions? Well, before I entertain a motion, I have just a quick comment, and that is that I also want to extend my gratitude to the city staff. This is a unique position in that it is an appointment of the council. And, and we couldn't have gotten this far without the support of the staff. And I'm really grateful for all the work that you've done liaising with the attorney. The incredible input coming out of the City Manager's Office. It just made for a much, much better product than, than I think we could have done on our own. And so I just want to say, thank you so much. We couldn't have done it without you. So if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Council Clerk?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Healthy Sustainable Communities for the provision of fire recovery and resiliency director services with a not to exceed amount of $147,405.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Healthy Sustainable Communities for the provision of fire recovery and resiliency director services with a not to exceed amount of 147,405. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Clerk?
Yes.
Council Prenderon?
Yes.
Council Grader?
Yes.
Counselor Pestejo is not present. Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. And Jordan, I hate to put you on the spot, but you do have your finance director with you tonight. I'd like to have it entered into the record, the, also the amount of funding that we have for this position. If you don't have it recalled, certainly if you could just enter it into the minutes, but do you recall what it is?
We currently have $100,000 budgeted for this position.
Okay, and then, and that's for this fiscal year and, and, and and that takes the portion for this year of this 147,000. Is that right? The rest of it would be applied to the following year?
Any of that 100,000 that's not used in this year, we will roll over to next year, as well as any additional budget that we assign to it. I will also, for the record, share that we have gotten the state to agree to reimburse us for up to $100,000 of this position.
Great, that's, that's the exact answer I was looking for. Thank you so much. This was, this is a state reimbursed fund. Yeah, great. Thank you so much, everybody, again, for the, this was a heavy lift. And just really appreciate everybody's patience and efforts to get this done. Thank you so much. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to new business. Item number nine. 9.1 is Presentation and Public Input on the New Urban Renewal Agency Work Plan. Staff report?
I would like to invite John Legarza up in his role as Executive Director for the Talent Urban Renewal Agency to lead this section of the agenda.
Good evening, everyone. Hector, can I share a screen for a second here?
Yes, John, you're, you're able to share. If you go down to the green share screen icon on the bottom.
Says, there it goes, okay. Good evening. Can everyone see that? Hello?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Council John Legarza, Executive Director for the Talent Urban Renewal Agency. Also presenting this evening is Elaine Howard from Elaine Howard Consulting and also Tyver Solutions. Issue for the board, before the council this evening, is a presentation and just to gather some public input on the new urban renewal work plan area. A little bit of background, the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Talent and the staff and its urban renewal consultant Elaine Howard are excited to join the City Council meeting tonight to present some of the initial goals and objectives of the new proposed urban renewal plan area. Urban renewals are programmed to help Oregon cities and counties renew regions within the city's boundaries. Urban renewal and tax incremental financing are ways for local governments to focus on investments on a particular area to bring about public and private upgrades. The City of Talent adopted the original Talent Urban Renewal Plan for the agency in 1991. The maximum indebtedness established in 1991 for the Talent Urban Renewal Plan Area was $17,127,276. The maximum indebtedness represents the total amount of funds that can be spent on projects, programs, administration, and urban rural area over the life of the Urban Renewal Plan. The frozen assessed value of the Urban Renewal Area was set at $8,359,724 in 1991, when the plan was adopted. As of the physical year of 2019, 2020, that new total assessed value is $81,254,324. Again, that's $81,254,324, increasing the excess value by $60,914,324. The agency has achieved great success in exceeding its original max indebtedness and increasing the tax valuation above the anticipated original indebtedness for the City of Talent as prepared in 1991. Today, that Talent Urban Renewal Area has ceased taking any division of taxes from the assessor, but continues to carry out its mission. The Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Talent has many investment into infrastructure improvements throughout the plan area. Within recent years, the agency required three parcels known as a gateway site within downtown talent. The agency has recently been able to develop the gateway site with more help than $2 million in contributions, but helped move the long-term community vision and install much-needed infrastructure for permanent development on the site. Since the fire, the agency has also bolstered its programs and outreach to talent community members. After the presentation from the Urban Renewal Consultant Team this evening, agency staff is excusing that the City Council provide time for speakers on this agenda item to discuss ideas and projects that could help fill the long-term redevelopment within the city talent for years to come. With the success of the previous Urban Renewal Agency emboldening the tax value within the talent community, agency staff believes that talent can contribute to rebuild stronger together by creating innovative programs and projects that will pave the way to rebuild in talent. This agenda item will also return in mid-February at the City Council meeting. With that, I'd like to introduce Elaine Howard. Elaine, I have your PowerPoint up here, so if you want.
Great. I'm Elaine Howard, consultant who's been helping the city and the Urban Renewal Agency on this project. And just for those of you who don't know me, I have been doing urban renewal around the state of Oregon for the last 17 years. I've worked with many of your neighboring cities, including Phoenix, Jacksonville, Medford, Central Point, Grants Pass, Clough Falls. So I kind of cover the Southern Oregon area, and I actually grew up in Grants Pass, so I know Southern Oregon very well and love Southern Oregon. So, next slide. This is the potential boundary for the new urban renewal area. It takes in the corridor where you had the impact from the burn. It also takes in other key property at the gateway. And it takes in some different natural resource areas within the City of Talent. And there may be that, John, you might have a better way of describing this area if we have folks on who have not heard this presentation before. So do you want to jump in and add anything to that?
Sure, sure, Elaine, thank you. So really, what we did here is we looked at where the burn scar area is. And if you look at this 99 corridor here, this commercial corridor, we're looking along the burn scar to be able to pick up in those areas, and then the areas that have been impacted, especially up here where you enter talent on the north end up here and comes down there too. And then also we have several larger public areas that are picked up that include the future park areas within talent here. And then also looking at improvements along the Wagner Creek Corridor to build, enhance those areas there. So, thank you, Elaine.
Great, thanks. Next slide. As we've been working with the City Council on the preparation of a potential new area, we have been talking about projects. Part of the, excuse me, importance of the meeting tonight and the one later in February is to get public input on these potential projects and to hear whether the public supports those or has additional ideas that they want to put on the table for projects to help improve the community. So I'm going to go through the different project ideas. One is housing-oriented solutions, so developing housing stock for 30, 60, and 80% of AMI, which is annual medium income. Also for seniors and those with mental health needs. For land baking properties, so land banking is buying and holding property so that those property values don't go up, but also to be able to put different properties together for a larger development. If you have a lot of single property owners and you want to be able to put parcels together, that would be for what's called the missing middle innovative programs. Missing middle are those people who earn above that 80% of income, but still need assistance in being able to fund their housing needs. So different ideas on that are programs to work with nonprofits. What are called B corporations to provide acquired land that is geographically dispersed to develop duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and tiny homes up to 20 units, because all of those are less expensive than creating new single-family homes. And also a better use of the land, so you can fit in more homes on a smaller footprint overall for the city. Also to purchase and to fund manufactured modular units to assist families who are under the 30% of the median income. And also to address those needs of minority underrepresented in agricultural workers. The City of Talent had Housing Needs Analysis prepared by Echo Northwest, which says they need 100 and that can't say 140,000 more homes today and an immediate 50% increase in residential permits for the next 20 years to meet future needs and restore balance to our housing markets. My bet is there's a zero off on that. I don't think it's probably 140,000, John.
That, that's for the whole state.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's something wrong here. I, I work across the state in almost all of the communities. And in every community that I work in, there is a housing need of some sort. So sometimes it's just getting housing developed, so hitting that price point where a developer is actually willing to build the housing. And sometimes it is because the housing is way too expensive and most people can't afford the housing. So, next slide. The second category is vacant business corridor solutions. So the potential development of incubator hubs, which are places where multiple small businesses or people wanting to create businesses can get together in one location. Those provide, a lot of times they're done for the culinary discipline. They're set up usually for a lot of people who are co-working. They also help facilitate people who have done home-based startups. Another area is business recruitment, both in advanced manufacturing, healthcare, and hospitality. So that means trying to get those businesses to come locate within the City of Talent. And then to provide capacity support to leverage workforce training within your city. That can be done through tracks, tax credit incentives for businesses, meeting DEI, diversity, equity, and diversity, equity, and inclusion programs. And this will create equitable economic development and career opportunities in both urban and rural Oregon with a special focus on engaging BIPOC workers and entrepreneurs. And BIPOC is Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Next slide. Urban forestry. This is especially works in a place like talent where you have beautiful assets, natural resource assets. So to develop programs along your greenways, to do streetscape enhancement along your business corridors, and to provide attention to Wagner Creek to do improvements to that creek area that couldn't otherwise be funded through your city programs. Next slide. Multimodal transportation, so improve walkability with the schools that sometimes called safe routes to schools, and the crossing of major streets and highways. Department with the Oregon Department of Transportation for a safe walk or safe routes to schools program. Connections to Highway 99 corridor and the Greenway, and to enhance pedestrian and bike routes within the city. Next slide. Emergency preparedness has come to the top of the attention of many cities in Oregon. And that includes emergency resiliency satellite hubs. So places where people know there will be either your information or supplies or a place for people to meet when there is an emergency need for disaster preparedness and for signage, wayfinding, and routing, so that people know where to go when you do have those kinds of emergency situations. Next slide. Parks, so overall improvements to parks in conformance with the city's master plan. Some examples of those might be the Suncrest Park and Chuck Roberts. and Chuck Roberts, and the Wagner Park and Joseph Park. So to follow what the master plan talks about in terms of improvements and to leverage city funds to be able to make those improvements within those parks. Next slide. This just shows some ideas of parks in other communities. Next slide. More ideas. Parks to me are a vital part of creating that identity in a downtown. And something that helps bring people to your area. This happens to be the park in Astoria that commemorates the Chinese workers within that community. There are many opportunities in Southern Oregon to commemorate different diverse groups who have contributed to your economy. Next slide. This shows public infrastructure, so potentially making investments for water, sewer, and stormwater. Street improvements and street lights throughout the urban renewal area. Next slide. And arts, arts is similar to parks in terms of, next slide. In terms of the public amenities and the feel that they can give to a community that, that shows both that the community cares about itself in making those kinds of investments in making the area more beautiful. You can do those in many varieties of ways and depending on what kind of art you do, it is an expenditure that can be done using the urban renewal funds. Next slide. These just show some examples of streetscape. So the streetscape involves sidewalks, planters, street trees, lighting. A lot of times cities put in those hanging planters. I know in the summer, if you drive through a lot of cities in Oregon, you can see those beautiful planters hanging that really identify your business district. Next slide. These are some great examples of placemaking and signage. The one on the left is in Sisters, Oregon, where they redid the entire downtown. It is a state highway, putting in, you can see the brick pavers, the landscape areas, they put in water quality areas that are landscaped, water quality areas. It's absolutely beautiful. And then in Pendleton, there's a different kind of signage that they have throughout their city that really shows off the Pendleton Roundup as one of their key features and key and iconic thing that happens in the city of Pendleton. Those kinds of things just provide that level of feeling like you're in a community that really cares about how they represent themselves. Next slide. I think, yeah, that's just a little bit for people who are seeing this for the first time. When you establish an urban renewal area, you are able to use funding from increased property taxes from new development in that area and property tax increases that 3% that's allowed on all of our properties. Urban renewal is not a new tax, so it doesn't increase your property taxes. It just divides those taxes differently so that the Urban Renewal Agency is able to focus programs and projects within a specific area. So that is how that funding works. And the list of projects that we just went through are just potential projects that the city council has identified as how they might like to spend money within talent to help bring it back to what it once was. So I, I think now I'll turn it back over, but I'll stay on and be available for any questions anyone might have.
You're muted, Mayor.
I say my most brilliant things when I'm muted. I just want to say really quickly that, for the record, that when we talk about the, the council discussing this project so far, really it's been in the capacity as a council as the Talent Urban Rural Agency. So I just think it can get confusing when most, most of the presentation and discussion we've had has been as members of the, of the TORA. But in accordance with our guiding documents, the, the council is those members are also the council, the council are also those members. So, so far we've functioned in the role of talent Urban Renewal Agency and we're here tonight as the council. So. So any comments or questions from anybody? I have a small, a few, few questions if I, if I could. If, when we go to the housing slide, there that, that particular workload or that particular work plan has a great deal of demand on the planning department or our community development department. And, and when I say our, I mean the city's community development department. So are there funds in the Talent Urban Renewal Agency that can be utilized to offset the, the resource impact that that has on the city? Other than just the usual planning fees?
So let me, this is Elaine, is it okay if I?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm directing the question to you, Elaine.
Okay. So even though Portland is a large city, it gives a good example just in terms of a process for doing that. So the city of Portland's Urban Renewal Agency is called Prosper Portland. They have an annual agreement with the Portland Housing Bureau to run the housing programs that are paid for with tax increment funds. That agreement includes administrative funds to support the people who are actually implementing those programs. So they have, they have set up that model to implement those housing programs. That's not done everywhere. And it really depends on how much you do in housing, but you could set up a similar model like that. I believe with a nonprofit and we would have to get an attorney to review how that would work. I know John has talked about and how a housing authority or becoming a housing authority or having a housing authority. And I'm not exactly sure, John, if that's using the capacity of an existing organization or trying to set up a new organization.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Elaine. I think we would be looking at, you know, a redevelopment authority. And then looking at, you know, within that authority, having a arm that could assist with some type of housing programs as we develop the programs and, you know, look at what that would be on the total indebtedness from that structure there with inside of it.
So you can use monies for administration. The thing to consider about that is making sure you don't use all of your money on administration so that the money doesn't actually get out and do the things that you want it to do. So there's always this fine line of if we develop something really brand new and we don't have any staff capacity to do that and we have to hire new staff to do it, does that new staff get paid for with urban renewal? And, and yes, you certainly can because you wouldn't need that staff but for the programs they administer. But if you do make those payments, it does count off of your total maximum indebtedness. So administration does come from that total maximum indebtedness amount. So it means less dollars go to the actual programs.
And so I'm just going to go ahead and go through my questions if, if, if that's okay with everybody. So so would that be, unless somebody has a, you know, a question that, that's on this topic, I'd be happy to stop and we can do that. Would that? And I probably some of the other questions I have about kind of the relationship, the financial relationship between Talent Urban Renewal Agency and the city and how they can support, work, collaborate and support one another. Would those details be outlined in an IGA? Is that the mechanism or all of that is? So, so really it's going to be important as we move forward to really look at the current IGA and then and determine how, how we're going to redevelop an IGA between. And am I wrong in assuming that if there was a new agency that we would, we would actually need to develop a new, that, that the IGA that's currently with the Talent Urban Renewal Agency wouldn't necessarily carry over to a new district?
So, yeah. The agency still exists. You didn't close your agency. You still have your agency. You closed an area. I would suspect that because you've closed that area, you should start a new IGA. And it might be the same verbiage as the old verbiage is. It might use that same language. But I don't think it would be wise to just pick up that one that has been dormant and was for a different area and use it again. But you could certainly use it as a model to start with for entering, entering into a, a second one.
So I suspected that was going to be the case. And I just want to put that on everybody's radar early. Because I think that, I think that our intention for, and I've, I've got my mayor hat on, not my urban renewal hat on right now. So I think our intention for this project is that it has as much inner, you know, interoperability between the two agents as possible, if that's even a word. And, and it, and it, you know, it's going to happen through the intergovernmental agreement. So so getting that, getting the questions answered to that document, I think is an important thing to start right out the gate.
Say, Mayor, you know, I think to Elaine probably can elaborate, but you know, we know the Urban Renewal Agency just joined the Main Street program and we're wondering how, you know, when we have this larger zone area and how that could be you know, a shared resource with the city to build, to really scale the staff that, right? That's an administrative, I mean, Elaine, you've seen that where some of the economic development Main Street programs are covered within urban renewal agencies too. So I wanted to, yes, as we go through, I think, you know, crafting this IGA with Jordan and her team, just really looking at all those different positions within the city that are going to collapse over as we go through this here.
And I do, I think on the Main Street one, John and I should have further talks about that because some, some cities have funded that in full. I'm not totally sure that works because they do just a lot of marketing and, you know, or organizing of events and that kind of thing. If that Main Street program is actually helping to do capital projects that are part of your urban renewal area, then that totally works. Or to market the loan programs that you might have. So I, I think getting an attorney to look at that and make sure, given what, what the restrictions are in ORIS 457, and I'm not an attorney, to make sure what amount you can pay for and what you can't. And your attorney may say, you know, I think all of this can be paid for as long as you have that in the file that shows that, then you don't have to worry about that. That's the attorney's burden if anybody challenges it.
Right. And I would hope that if there is some collapping, discussions about collapping, that we would, we would engage the city staff in those discussions as well, if, if they have the capacity to join those meetings. Okay. Does anybody else want to ask anything on this housing? Cause I'll shift this, Jordan?
I mean, you know, I have a, a general question, so I'll wait till your list is done.
Okay. So the next question I have, is there any way that we can get the screenshots back up, the presentation? I want to look at the screen that talks about business development, the business recruitment. And there was a, there was something that jumped out at me that I want to ask about. Is that possible? If it's not, I'll, I'll try to.
Yeah, John should be able to put it back up. Okay.
Thanks, everybody, for your indulgence. So if we can go back, John, to, yeah, let's see, is this it? Yeah. So business recruitment is such a, such a, an important element of the city's economic development. Or, you know, this, this city's economic element of the comp plan. And so would that be another opportunity for TORA to actually support the city in some of that work? If there was parts of that that the city would want to have that remain as part of their function? In other words, could TORA provide resources for the city or does it, I mean, is the answer the same that there's administrative funds that can be funneled?
I think the answer is the same that you would, you would want an attorney to just clarify what can and can't be paid. I know there are certain functions that can be done. An example would be from Wilsonville where they have the program set up for trying to get in industrial users to come to Wilsonville and they set up an incentive program and people who run that program do actually make contacts with and, and they're paid by urban renewal funds and they make contacts with different recruiters in the state of Oregon and different people as part of trying to get people to use that program. So you know, that supports administratively that program. And if somebody applied to that program, that application would be reviewed by their urban renewal staff. So it really just depends on, on, on what you're doing. And I, again, I can tell you that some urban renewal agencies are absolutely doing this with their urban renewal funds. And I tell them the same thing, which is make sure that you've just returned, we reviewed it with your attorney and that you have their blessing that that is an okay expenditure of urban renewal funds.
And so there are, a follow-up question is there's, there are lands that are actually, like we have some economic development lands that are in our urban reserves and we have some industrial lands and there's some, you know, there's quite a bit of commercial property now available. Does Talent Urban Renewals effort or supporting the city's capacity for this type of effort only apply to businesses that would come into that, that district? Or what if, you know, the general campaign resulted in you know, some manufacturing company wanting to go into TA4, for example. I mean, so like what, how much flexibility is there? Because with this, this is, you know, this is so much more nebulous than, than I think housing is.
Right. So nebulous and there, there are very strict interpretations that urban renewal funds cannot be spent on activities outside of an urban renewal area. So they could do, you know, the, the general marketing and somebody can say, well, we really don't want to be in this area, but we want to be in that area. And if your staff spends a lot of time with them, they really shouldn't be billing that to urban renewal. They should be billing that to the city budget. And how you manage that will be something, I mean, I, I keep track of every minute of my time and bill it to the clients for whom I'm working. And I imagine you could do that kind of thing with whoever's running that program and to know that part of their time will be billable to TORA and part of their time will be billable to the city and that they really have to divide that according to where the business is going to end up.
And then providing capacity for support to leverage workforce training. Either John or Elaine, can you tell me a little bit about that? What, what, what you have in mind there?
Tell you where I know this has happened in a couple of places. So in Gresham, they built a beautiful building in downtown Rockwood or Rockwood, which is a portion of Gresham that has an incubator hub, a culinary incubator hub. And then they developed a, a space there for the community college to come in and do workforce training. So the part that was paid for by the urban renewal area was providing the space and providing the equipment. And then the actual teaching, advertising that program and all is funds outside of that. So they provided the capital facility. funds outside of that. So they provided the capital facility and supplies and equipment that were necessary.
Okay. And now I'm going to ask my, does anybody have any question on this? This has all been very helpful for me to have a better understanding um, of where I'm hoping we go in the IGA. I mean, I hope, you know, um, I hope that uh, this helps in, inform or inspire some ideas about how we can form formulate this relationship with the city as well. Uh, i- in the event that we move forward with this. Um, so my last question is regarding the infrastructure and it's funny that I'm even going to ask this because um, so much of the talent urban renewal agency's history is around building infrastructure already. And um, so, um, but honestly, um, I, I, I can't say that I ever had a really clear understanding of how um, how I, my, my memory is that we, that the urban renewal agency has built all of the infrastructures 100% out of the urban renewal agency and then transferred the ownership or the maintenance or whatever it is over to the city. Do I remember that correctly? Okay.
All right. As long as that infrastructure's in the urban renewal area. So sometimes that infrastructure, um, now if it's a, it's like a water treatment plant, you can only pay a percentage of the water treatment plant. If it's a, you know, a road, when the road stops being in the urban renewal area and starts being in the city limits, then the city has to pick up that portion that's outside of the urban renewal area. So.
Right. And, and then uh, the finer, uh, the finer point that I, I think I was trying to understand is just that whatever was in the urban renewal area was 100% paid for by urban renewal agency and then transferred over to whatever they built was 100% trans uh, paid for by urban renewal agency and then transferred over to the city, right? Yeah, okay. That's what I thought. Um, okay. I don't have any more questions um, at this time. Are, are there any other questions? Uh, um, Jordan, I saw your hand go up, up. Yeah, and there goes down. Counselor Panomarif.
Sure, I'll go before Jordan. Um, yeah, so with my counselor's hat on it, um, being cognizant of any, any um, urban renewal, uh, with the tax situation, uh, the city budget will take a hit. So um, my understanding is though, that that can be compensated for if, for example, um, capital improvement projects the city would normally budget for and happen to be in uh, the urban renewal area. Then Tura could essentially pick up the bill for that. So in a way that, one way I'm thinking about this is that um, the city could pretty much remain whole, the budget could remain whole, assuming that some of the capital projects um, would be taken over. Is that, is that a, a, a good way to think about it or am I, am I missing something? That's for, that's for Elaine or, or John.
Um, that's absolutely correct. If there, uh, if there are projects that the city has, uh, infrastructure, capital improvement plan, types of projects that they need to do, but the Tura can do that instead, then that money becomes available for the city that they might've spent on that other project, they can spend on their staffing or, or what else. So w- always think of your urban renewal agency as really as sticks and bricks, bricks and mortar. Um, your bill, i- i- the real intent is to build, you're building things. And so it can be building infrastructure, um, uh, building buildings. Um, so a- anything that's within the area that fits in that can be accomplished, you know, within the overall maximum indebtedness.
Thank you.
You're Elaine. Jordan?
Yeah, I have a, a follow-up question to that and then a second question. You know, my understanding, and I'm so that at a one-on-one state here, is that the majority of the property taxes that the city currently collects goes for spending in our general fund. Um, and so by establishing a Tura boundary, that biggest impact um, of losing potential money sources to our general fund, to our capital, our capital fund, you know, just funded through SDCs and other projects, that's a huge boon because Tura can help us really move forward on projects that would take us a long time to save for. My question is, Elaine, is the way mostly to account for the loss of the general fund, is that from the IGA agreements where you tried to share some staff time with the Tura agency to make up that monetary loss?
So there, there are a couple of things that happen. That is one way is if you have staff um, doing work for Tura to be able to reimburse that. The, the other thing to think about is any growth that happens within this area goes to Tura. But if you are able to facilitate growth and have it start happening, all the growth in the rest of that 75% of your city goes to the city. So you, yes, you are limiting growth within this area. And I, I asked John this the other day, and I think this is true, is that this coming fiscal year will be the first fiscal year that you will see the actual impact of the burn. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, so there are currently programs to offset that revenue loss.
Yeah.
Two years.
Um, but that will at least let you know, let us all know what that value will really be. Uh, and we, uh, John and I talked about this the other day. We can then look at that value and do some projections for you for just the city's general fund. And the, you know, the, the kind of growth in the areas that aren't in the urban renewal area so that you can get a handle on that fiscal stability for the city as a whole, which I I, I totally understand the need to do that, especially since those incomes for the base year will be going down because of the burn.
Excellent. Very excited to hear that will be included in your analysis. Um, I do have another question, but Councilor Panomarif, you had a follow-up to what was being talked about. Great. I'll do my, my last question first is a comment is I got to tour some of Central Point's urban renewal projects today, um, which was really fun to see and I really recommend to any folks in the audience here tonight to take a chance to go up there. It's a really cool tool to help get the um, the city character really up front and center. But Elaine, my, my question to you or to John, you know, we are hosting these public input sessions here at city council. This meeting and next meeting, you know, is a way to really start getting community input um, at John's request. And we have some people in the audience tonight that we usually don't see, which is very fun. Can you just elaborate the best way for folks to stay engaged with the conversation or how they continue to just stay hooked in throughout the process?
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about that, uh, Mayor Jordan. Um, you know, we're, we're doing these, um, you know, at the city council, we're also going to be going live with a hub website there too. And I think also probably wouldn't hurt, uh, Mayor to even have a town hall in March, you know, cause as we go through working with the city and looking at the programs, uh, so we're, we're trying to really push out and uh, we're, we're going to do some surveys in the future upcoming months here too. So really looking at uh, social media, survey hubs, uh, newspaper articles, getting in front of, you know, bringing this to city council, uh, you know, and potentially having the mayor and the council considering a town hall in March too, so.
Any other questions? Counselor Panomarif?
Yeah, and this is probably a, a budget one-on-one question. Um, so I thought as far as uh, inter-fund transfers, I thought as long as um, it wasn't an enterprise fund um, that, that you could move money around in the budget. Um, is that, is that not the case?
I don't know the answer uh, to that question.
Can you repeat the question, Councilor Panomarif? I'm not sure I caught it.
Well, I mean, um, we were talking about um, the hit to the general fund versus um, the other funds. Um, and I'm just wondering as far as, is moving money around within the budget from one fund to another, inter-fund transfers? Um, I thought the only time you couldn't do that was with enterprise funds. So for example, water, um, bill has to go towards water or water projects. But, but other than that, there was some ability to uh, transfer funds. Uh, and I think in this case, we'd be able to um, transfer funds into the general fund or is, is that not the case?
I think that's a question for the city, right? Yeah, is, um,
Yes.
Do you want to take that or, or Kurt? I think this is um, stuff I've heard Kurt talk about as well.
Yes, unfortunately Kurt has had to jump um, off the phone call unless Kurt, if you're in the audience now rather than the panelists. Um, as he had another engagement tonight. So Councilor Panomarif, I want to email you the answer to make sure I'm fully correct and I will send it to the full council and include it as a posting with tonight's meeting info on the website. Um, my understanding is that we can do inter-fund transfers for a lot, for a lot of the times we go from an enterprise fund to our capital projects fund to start funding officially those water projects. You know, in my experience, which is limited, I have not yet seen funds transferred into the general fund, except for when it comes to, for example, public works. Um, staff salaries that have to do with water specific work or park specific work, et cetera. So I'll get you a, a more clarified and exact answer um, in writing, if that's okay.
Councilor Panomarif?
Yeah, I'd say that's more than okay and it, it could totally wait for the more, we're going to get um, certainly a more in-depth um, financial analysis and I can wait for that. I don't want to, I don't want to give you more work.
John, uh, and Jordan, this is a question for both of you really. Rocket's joining the discussion, so let me close the door. Um, so uh, is there an opportunity, um, or would we, Jordan, let me start with you. If there was an opportunity to um, to have some of the financial impact um, analysis for the city, um, ma- maybe some internal analysis. Is that something, I guess maybe even Elaine could answer, um, is that something, if there was a need for that, is that something that the urban renewal agency can pay for? Does it, does that, that question make sense? Like, so if there was a part of this analysis, the city wanted to have, to launch, um, that would be an impact to our, to the city's resources, is that, could the city have um, that ability if it made sense, if they wanted it to be paid for by a talent urban renewal agency? Yeah, Elaine?
What John and I had talked about is something um, not real expensive that can just be done as, uh, we have a contingency in our contract. And I think that a, a lot of times city managers ask this question when we're working on an urban renewal plan or finance directors. And so it, I think it is part of the planning for the urban renewal area and can be spent out of that contract. If after we do that and you want more in-depth analysis, uh, then N- Nick will provide an overview. Um, if you want more in-depth analysis, that becomes more expensive, then you would need to talk about h- how you really pay for that analysis or where's the appropriate place. But let's, let's do this first step first and see if that gives a level of comfort or not and what else you think you might want and then go from there, if that sounds okay.
I, I, it does. And you know, again, I have my mayor's hat on. So what I want, what I'm really trying to find out is if that was, uh, if that ever ended up being a need of the city, is it allowable? I mean, is that something, like I get that we want to go through, um, you know, go through this by layers until we get to a point where everybody's comfortable. But if there's a, if there's a deeper level that the city's going to need to get more comfortable about this decision, um, and that would otherwise be a resource impact, is it, is it allowable for um, uh, for an outside entity to ask for more information, get in more in-depth and then have that paid for by talent urban renewal agency? I just want to, just want to know that.
We could, we can add that clarified with our attorney too.
That's great. Perfect. Any other questions or comments? One last one I have, John, and that is, um, early in this discussion, we talked about um, engaging the other jurisdictions in a discussion. Would that be something we would do at the town hall? Or would there be another, uh, another platform for that?
I think first, um, you know, this, we just want to get to, you know, this month, run some numbers and then start developing some programs, meet with the city, kind of fine tune that, right? And then start that discussion. Elaine and I are going to work to update the timeline. We'll have it for the next city council here. And we'll show when we'll start the outreach for the, uh, the other taxing districts and we'll have that identified for everyone too.
Great. And my last question I promise is la- uh, when I was last at an urban renewal agency meeting, a long, long time ago, I think it was last night, um, we talked about uh, maybe having uh, uh, steps, uh, timing, uh, timing and steps and you thought you might have that tonight. Is that available or are we still working on it?
Still working on it, but we'll definitely share that with the council and, and have that for you for the next meeting and get that out of ten periods, so.
Great. All right. Well, I've done all, all the drilling down on this that I want to do. Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you, um, John and Elaine for giving us so much time and so much great information. Um, and I look forward to hearing more. So. Yeah. Thank you, Elaine. Good to see you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Um, okay. Uh, so with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is nine point two, discussion on planning commission structure. Staff report?
Yes, thank you. Let me pull the screen up one more time. You know, with re- um, recent vacancies on the planning commission and some scheduling difficulties, it's really come to staff's awareness um, that if the planning commission is unable to fulfill its responsibilities or its duties for really any reason, there's currently no alternative in our code um, for seeking recourse or finding other pathways to make sure projects and quasi judicial decisions move forward. Um, we can begin with some, you know, experts in this area, including our city attorney and DLCD to help them come up with some potential solutions to help us um, avoid a deal that issue if it were to ever occur. And they recommended, you know, two different solutions. One, which is to make the quorum of our planning commission to consist of the majority of members that are on the commission. Currently, we have a minimum quorum of four in our planning commission. And then to also stipulate that the city council can act in the stead of the planning commission, you know, in an event that it is needed. So these are potential changes that we can make from municipal code. You know, what I'm looking for from council tonight is just to get a consensus that this is a direction that you all would like to move in. You know, I've given a, an example of a draft ordinance by no means the exact language yet. Um, to give you an example, as well as the timeline, it is a lengthy process, which is why I want to make sure to get a sense of where council is at before having staff engage in the process for making these changes. So that was the, the quick 30-second elevator speech. I'm happy to answer any questions on specifics from the staff report as well.
Jordan, I'm so sorry to do this, but I'm going to back us up to nine point one because I didn't ask for public input. And um, so um, I, my apologies to the council and everybody in the audience. That was an oversight. Um, and thank you Hector for pointing that out. I really appreciate that a lot. Um, so with that, um, I will uh, ask the audience if, uh, first, let me ask, are there any speaker request forms for this item, Hector?
Uh, Mayor, there are no speaker requests uh, for this particular item.
And I'll look to the audience now and ask if there's anybody with us tonight, uh, that would like to speak on, uh, any, any attendees that would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Okay. My, uh, again, my apologies to everybody, that, that kind of oversight. I know, I don't like it. I'm sorry. All right. So let's go back to item nine point two. And we just got the staff report and so you're looking for directions. Let's start with, are there any questions or comments on this item? Counselor Clark? Council Clark?
You said it's, it's a timely process. Is it just a multi-step process in order to, to, what is it, a resolution or that you were talking about? Or is it just a large burden on staff time, just clarify what you meant by that?
Yeah, it's a timely process, just because this is a type four legislative process. So first, we have to provide DLCD 35 days notice before we post a public hearing notice, it'll go in front of planning commission for public hearing, and then I'll go in front of city council for a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, we can go ahead and, and vote on an ordinance. So when I say lengthy, I just mean it takes time to go through the steps to amend this section, particular section of our code.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, speaking just for myself, I, my, my comment is, is whether or not we were, find ourselves in this situation. I do think that both of these changes are, are good for the city's business. Should we ever find ourselves in this situation, again, we want to be in a position where we can do our business. So if there's no other questions, all you need is a consensus really to start to, to develop this or make some, start, start the process and, and bring, what will you bring, a draft ordinance for us to approve?
I do, I will bring, it'll first go through a public hearing at the planning commission to help provide input on that ordinance, and then public hearing with you all at city council to also provide public input, and you'll be seeing multiple drafts along the way.
Sounds good, so let's just get that consensus, and, and really, sometimes it's just easier, is there anybody who opposes this idea? Council Clark?
I don't oppose it, I was going to ask, are we going to, are, we're talking about removing the current minimum of four, changing quorum to a majority of the number of members on the commission at that time? Or, or are we talking about reducing the number of, of commission seats?
Yeah, and, and talking with DLCD and looking at other jurisdictions in the area, their recommendation was just to remove the quorum statement from our code and have it be present in our bylaws. And bylaws are set by the planning commission. And then to recommend the planning commission to have them set bylaws to be quorum as the majority of members active on the committee. So if we ended up only having five members, it would be a three quorum.
I, I really appreciate it, when, anytime the city, the city creates or guiding documents in this way, because by taking it out of the ordinance and making it a part of our bylaws, those are documents that can be changed in just the course of a meeting where, where the way this is set up, we're going to have to take our time. So take, I, I just, I think that's a really smart recommendation from the DLCD, so. And, and so membership is in the bylaws as well, right, it's not in our code, yeah, okay.
You, membership, I will, I will, sorry, clarify, membership is in our code. For some reason, all of our bylaws were also codified, codified. So we have it as seven seats is our current membership of the planning commission. That is the same for every city in our region except for Medford, which is nine. If council is interested in potentially lowering that to five or making it a five to seven, that is something that we could include in this process as well.
By just a simple change of the bylaws, right? Or is it in the ordinance?
It's not a, it's in our code, so we'd have to add it to the ordinance to strike it from the municipal code. Which can be done and be put in our bylaws as well.
Councilor Panamara, Council Clark, after that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a harm in, in just keeping it at seven. If there's not enough people, then the majority is still, the quorum is still the majority of however many folks we have. Yeah, I just, I, I remember we ran into this problem with, I forget what it was, if it was parks or, but I, but I think it was, it was different.
Yeah, I think, very good.
I think that, I hope Counselor Clark is going to tell us why.
Why? I don't know, I do, we did, we did reduce the number of seats on the Parks Commission from from seven to five full members with two alternate seats. But in this situation, I'm inclined to agree with, with Eleanor to keep it at seven and remove the four-person quorum requirement as, as described. And I think that if we can get, you know, seven active members, then that's great. And if we can only get five active members, then we can still function, so.
Brilliant, council. And staff. Okay, well, so if nobody objects, I think you have a consensus. And if you want to object, object by raising your hand. Go on once, go on twice. I think you have a consensus. Okay, item 9.3 is discussion and procedures for candidate elections within the city of talent, staff report.
Great, thank you, this will be the same ask to council to provide staff with some just general direction tonight. Back in 2020, council opted to include a alternative route to becoming an eligible candidate to get on the ballot for November 2020 elections. That alternative route was to pay a $20 filing fee to the city to be able to get on the ballot without having to collect signatures. I'm looking back at some historical staff reports on this topic, it was largely because of public health concerns of having people that have to connect together to get those signatures. The code that was put in place was sunsetted on December 31st, 2021. And so I just wanted to raise that to council so that, one, you know that currently the only way to get on the November 2023 ballot is going to be through collecting 20 signatures. And put it all to you to see if you would like to include a similar alternate route for the upcoming elections. Actually, sorry, in 2022, we're only in 2022, it turns out right now. If, if you want to do that, then the staff can start on that process, if that's the direction you want to go in.
Any feedback? Councilor Panamara?
Yeah, I remember this discussion before, and I think it, it was in deference to people wanting to, to be safe and not be at risk collecting signatures. I think there also was a discussion about, we didn't want the fee to be in any way prohibitive. So, you know, $20 is a small fee, but I mean, if it's, if it's more meaningful to not have any fee, I think that could be something to consider. I'm also wondering if, whether we want to look at displaced folks who might want to run. I know that it's, it's hard to get, to get back, there's some people that are still not able to. We've talked about that, keeping that open, but I think we put a deadline. So that might also, if we're going to be looking at this anyway, we might also want to look at that, making sure that folks who are displaced to have the intention of, of returning. And I, at the risk of sounding self-serving, because I'm, I'm still in that boat.
Councilor Clark?
Yeah, definitely would like to renew the allowance for displaced folks intending to return to participate in our elections and, and run for office. You know, I'm, I'm at this point comfortable with going back to the, to the historic norm of requiring 20 signatures. I think we're kind of learning to cope with our circumstances, things were newer at that time, and that was the right call at that time. At this point, I feel like I'm comfortable, you know, asking people if they want to run to collect 20 signatures, it's not an onerous amount, but it is a demonstration of some, you know, community support. So that's my two cents.
Counselor Byers, and then Counselor Greider.
Thank you, I'm wondering if the council might consider an either-or situation with the current requirement for a filing fee versus collecting 20 signatures? Especially if community members are displaced, it may not be that easy for them to collect 20 signatures from other people who live in talent currently. Just a thought.
Thoughtful.
Yeah, I was actually just going to ask for clarification if this was an either-or.
It was.
Okay.
It, it was not before though, right, was it?
I apologize to not make it clear on this slide. A candidate could get on the November 2020 ballot either by collecting signatures or paying the $20 fine, or $20 fee, I should say, not a fine to run.
Okay. So it would, if we reinstated it, it would just be the same, right? It would be an either-or, like, it's not something that we necessarily need to specify, because it already is an either-or, okay, got it. I, I like Counselor Byers thought it was a one or the other. Counselor Byers?
Just however it was communicated in 2020, I thought it was only a filing fee. And, and I was happy to file that fee when I wanted to run, but, so perhaps we could include some clarity of the language.
I, I had the same impression. Okay. So and it sounds to me like we could just move forward with the same direction for 2023, making it an either-or, and just adding some clarifying language. Is there any objection to that? Okay, you have a consensus, is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, once I believe Counselor Greider has a question, then I'll ask the clarification afterwards.
Okay, I'm sorry, Counselor Greider?
Yeah, just another, probably just, I, I don't know that this would be in the language, but just for my own, would would folks know that how they had submitted that, like, would that, and I wouldn't want people to feel that there would, that it would be looked at differently for one way or the other, if that makes sense? Since it isn't either-or, which is, seems great, and either-or seems great, but yeah, that was just the thought I had.
You know, I believe since it's particularly, well, since the city is business-related, but in particularly election-related, I think that information would be public record. So yes, it would be information available for folks to know if they requested it from the city. My quick clarification, mayor and council, so what I am hearing tonight is that I will direct staff to go ahead and draft ordinance to include this either-or option of filing a $20 fee in place of doing 20 signatures, either-or. At the same time, staff will also look into our current allowance to, for displaced folks to still actively partake in town public official business. And we'll bring it up to you all at the same time, to make sure that we can tie all of our bows before we enter into election season this year.
That's a good interpretation, okay, perfect. Okay, great. So the next item on the agenda is other business and future agenda items. Anybody have any other business or future agenda items? I just have one comment really quickly about the liaisons, I'd like to get it on the next agenda to appoint the liaisons. And if you haven't responded to my email, I sent an email out to everybody. If you haven't responded yet about what your firm choices are, I, you know, I like to appoint based on interest, so that's where I start. So if you, if there's anybody who hasn't responded, please do, I'm building a spreadsheet in, and I'll try to get some clarifying answers from folks where I'm not clear, and then we'll talk about it at the next meeting and put a bow on it. Counselor Panamara?
Thank you, and that sounds great about liaisons. I just wanted to, I think I, I might have heard wrong, but if, if I didn't, I just wanted to make a clarification about what that excellent presentation we had in study session. What she started with from, from the council rules. The council rules state the general obligation includes counselor's duties to refrain from, and a list of a bunch of things. And, and the eighth thing says, expressing a public opinion that is contrary from the official position of the council without so stating. So, so basically, and, and I think this is good for folks to know, if you, especially with the short session in the state, if you wanted to testify about something that, that you care about, you can certainly identify yourself as a talent city councillor. If it's not something that the council has written a resolution on or voting on, typically what we would do is we would say, I'm a city councillor with the city of talent, representing myself and my constituents. And so you are speaking as a public official, so that actually carries quite a bit of weight with the, the state legislature. But you're not claiming to speak on behalf of the council, which the council only speaks, speaks with one voice. So that was just a little clarification. It's okay to disagree with the council publicly, you just can't claim to be speaking for the council when you're not.
Thank you, Councilor Panamara, and, and really quickly going back to my other item. So I just asked for an agenda item and asked for a specific date. So when I do that, I either need to ask Jordan if we can get it on the next day, or I need to ask council to, to vote on the next date. So Jordan, is it, do we have space on the next agenda?
We do.
Yeah, and pardon me if I sounded like I was building your agenda. Okay, all right, cool, yep, Jordan?
I do have, this is just another business item, mayor, if you want to stay on for 30 seconds after adjournment, I can show you how to adjust your screen so that you can see everybody during screen share.
Yeah, thanks, and that's, yeah, during screen share, that's, okay, great, that's awesome, all right. Anybody else for other business or future agenda items? So we'll adjourn this meeting at eight 13 or so, and, let me look at my phone. Eight oh nine, thanks. My, my, my clock is getting worse, it's actually getting worse, so, okay, so this meeting is adjourned, and Jordan, I would love to get a little direction from you.
Great, let's stay on, thank you everyone, thanks everyone. All right, mayor, I am currently sharing my screen.